Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to Placerville Town Hall located within the downtown Extension section of Main Street. This multi-use venue has served the public for decades as a sometimes site for lectures, workshops, religious services, and neighborhood chats. Also as a site for arts, including dance, music, language lessons, and what I call the Planning Commission Community Theater. The site is also the premier venue for the home of the Placerville City Council, the city's Measure H and L Sales Tax Committee, as well as the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, and the Park and Rec Commission, and of course, the meeting home of tonight's distinguished panel, the Placerville Planning Commission. I now direct the audience, your attention please, to the dais for the introduction of the Placerville Planning Commission. First, seated at the far left of the dais, he was appointed by City Council back in February of 2001. He's been reappointed this past March and is beginning his sixth full term as a Planning Commissioner. From central Placerville, Michael Friend. Next, from northwest Placerville, appointed by City Council in March of 2014, and serving in his third year of his second term as a Commission Member, John List. From central Placerville, appointed by City Council in March of 2019, serving in her third year of her first term as a Commission Member, and elected this year by the Planning Commission to serve as Chair during 2021, Amy Lepper. From north-central Placerville, appointed by City Council in the March of this year, elected by the City Planning -- excuse me, elected by the City Planning Commission to serve as Vice Chair during 2021, Nicole Gottberg. From northeast Placerville, appointed by City Council in August of 2017, now serving in the third year of her first full term as Planning Commission Member, Chris Keeney. Welcome, Commission. I turn the meeting over to Chair Lepper.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I will call to order the July -- June 15th, 2021 Placerville Planning Commission Meeting at about 6:05 PM. I believe everyone can join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Although we had a wonderful introduction, if you could go ahead and call roll, Mr. Painter.
From Chair One.
Member List.
Here.
Chair Lepper.
Here.
Vice Chair Gottberg.
Here.
Member Keeney.
Here.
Okay, great. So, the next item on our agenda will be approving our consent calendar, which will approve the agenda for tonight, as well as the approval of the minutes from our May 4th, 2021 regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Request that Item Number 7 be pulled from the agenda tonight. The clarity on the drawings are such that it would make us difficult to really know what they're proposing.
Okay. So, we have a motion? Is that -- I haven't done this part. Pardon me, I'm new to the chair, so this is my first in-person meeting, so there might be a little bit of a learning curve. Would that need a motion, or would that be something that we?
There's a motion.
Yeah, it would be--
A motion to remove, pull the agenda, or reorder the agenda. That needs to then be separate on the consent, I think. So, we can either discuss that first or deal with the minutes. So, there's a motion, I guess it requires a second for discussion.
Okay. So, I have a motion to postpone the public hearing on 251 Main Street, the Site Plan Review for the Green Room Social Club, for further clarification on the drawings. Do I have a second?
I'm going to second it just for a second discussion, so I can hear Commissioner List's concerns in detail.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Friend has seconded the motion, so further discussion? Commissioner List?
Yes, thank you. Trying to get to where it needs to be.
It's a big packet tonight.
Where I put my drawings, now that you called me out of work.
My apologies, this -- oh, here we go. We're given a number of items for this particular item, and one of them was a set of drawings that, if you have this, Commissioners, and you look at it, it is -- it was printed, and it's so light, it's hard to tell what it is, what they're trying to tell us. And then, if you go to one of the pictures, which is the front exterior, it tells us that the sign is approximately six foot wide by three foot tall, and if we look at the door that's next to it, that means the door is about four and a half feet tall. So, in reality, it's not to any scale that we can work with to ensure that what they are putting up there is actually going to meet their criteria, and that's why I ask for it to be pulled.
Do any other Commissioners have any questions or discussion around that?
I respectfully disagree. We -- I think you're placing too high a standard on this, and I think in the past, just to be fair to all applicants, I appreciate your concern. I would like to have better graphics, so that we know we have a fair representation of what the applicant has in mind. However, in the past, we have reviewed without this kind of objection, the same similar drawings, things are not exactly in proportion, and so I think, from my review, I was able to understand what their intent is, and I think that they've done an adequate job of getting that point across.
I -- my preference would be to give the applicant an opportunity to explain their drawings, as opposed to automatically dismissing it out of hand. If we find in the public hearing that the presentation is less than satisfactory, then we can take action to postpone it, request that they bring it back, or any number of things. So, I would be -- I would agree with Commissioner Keeney, I would be hesitant at this point to automatically say, no, it's got to come back to us, this is insufficient.
So, I guess I would agree, that I feel like the drawings -- I'd like to ask the applicant some questions about their drawings, but I don't see the drawings in and of themselves as a reason to defer the item.
Okay. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and call roll on the motion.
And that's not to say that the present -- that the application was superior, so just--
Okay. Mr. Painter, can you call roll on the motion, which is to postpone the public hearing on the Site Plan Review 8415, our social club?
Member Friend.
Nay.
Member List.
Yes.
Chair Lepper.
No.
Vice Chair Gottberg.
No.
Member Keeney.
No.
Okay. So, moving on, we will go ahead, and with that, we have no changes currently to the agenda or consent -- I'm sorry, to the agenda with the minutes.
Motion to approve the agenda, since it was pulled off the calendar.
Okay. So, motion to approve the agenda?
As well as the meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Well, my motion is to approve the agenda, since that was pulled off calendar. And we could do both, but just to make it clean.
I'll just quickly approve each one. So, motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Friend.
All second.
Second by Commissioner Gottberg, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, motion to approve the May 4th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, first, so we are good to go. Can we call roll on that one? Or I guess all in favor, we can just do voice vote.
Aye.
Okay. Still weird having you guys right next to me. Okay, so then we are going to move on. We don't have any items pulled, so we're going to move on to -- we have items of interest to the public. So, this is an opportunity for those in the public to address the Commission on matters germane to our jurisdiction that are not on the agenda tonight. So, if anyone wishes to address us, you have three minutes to come to the podium. Go ahead and approach the podium if you do. Oh, okay.
Pierre is aware of this, and some of you may have seen other communications, but the gist of it is, I guess it's just putting on radar, you know, we have street classification in the general plan, and Clay Street is basically a local road, and when you -- the engineer often talks about it being a collector road. But anyway, the current general plan has these standards that come from Caltrans that have, you know, distances of width, and just Clay Street is wider on one side than on the other, the narrow side is very narrow, especially when you have trashcans. But anyway, this is just all kind of in preparation for, you know, potential future discussions about the bridge, the realignment, and, you know, essentially joining that with a minor arterial with Cedar Ravine, and the implications of a neighborhood street becoming joined with a minor arterial. And it's just a concern, because just every day, there's just massive speeding, and we just need traffic calming. We even have signs, you know, it's like more curves than straight, and on the curves, there's signs that sort of show, slow down, go 20. So, one of the real desires is to, you know, have more stop signs, have a 20-mile speed limit, you know, there's other things, of course, people have talked about the raised sidewalk, or crosswalks, you know, which function like a speed table. But anyway, just the speeding, managing that traffic on that corridor, which is in a neighborhood, is really going to change, and currently has serious problems. So, anyway, thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Kirk Smith. I wanted to address the subject of short-term housing, the rental market, and suggest that it's something that would deserve some attention by having a hearing on that subject to formulate a universal policy. You took a look at that not long ago, I guess it was nearly two months ago, for an Airbnb unit, and tonight you have the traditional kind of bread-and-breakfast unit. But we don't have anything here, except, I believe, as I understood from the last consideration, it was a business corridor along the highway. But when people get Airbnb, they want something that's an alternative to the Holiday Inn and the Gideon Bible. They want something that's like home. So, you have two basic considerations that are at odds on the surface. One is that you make a lot of money that the city's not making. The Board of Supervisors has recently announced that their budget is in great shape, and the Chair said it's because of Airbnb income, but we don't get that. If we did, we could earmark it for homeless issues, like providing for that development for short-term housing for the homeless down by the fairgrounds, and other kinds of things like that. On the other side, we don't want the mess you have in Lake Tahoe, where it's run up the prices for real estate, have lots of speculators come in and buy lots of houses in all kinds of neighborhoods, and noise and things like that. That's what we don't want. So, that's what I think you ought to look at. I just mentioned that, for example, we have six acres up on the hill that's leftover from my great-grandparents' pear orchard, and there's three houses on it. Two are vacant, they're going to continue to be vacant. I can't have Airbnb units. But they're not close to anybody, it's not going to cause noise, and it's not going to cause the displacement of families. But the rules don't permit it, it's not along the highway, so we can't apply for it. But it would be needed. First of all, we own a number of properties, so we could leave it vacant, it wouldn't bother our bottom line. But a couple of years ago, I had heart surgery and needed a place to stay with 24-hour care, and that was it, because in the 100-year-old Craftsman I lived in, I couldn't go up the second floor. And no one's in it now, except Friends periodically, because when the COVID's over, we'll have relatives come in to visit. So, that could be used for short-term housing, if it were permitted, and you can make money. So, what I'm suggesting is, you have a hearing, advertise it, and get the public input. One of the things that could be done is to ask Airbnb and the other big companies for their information about how other communities have addressed the subject. I've asked them and gotten some information, I haven't gotten around to reading, but let them do the research for you, and find out how do they handle it in different communities, where you solve the problem of not displacing people, not providing a big market for investors, and doing what you want to do, which is provide a place for housing, short-term, just like you'd have with hotels if we ever got them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any of the other members of the public wish to address us on items not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion, and we will move forward to our public hearings. Do I need to touch base on the written communications that we received? Pierre, Andrew, or is that just acknowledged on the agenda that we've received those?
It's entirely your purview.
Okay. Okay. So, we did receive two written communications dated April 30th and May 4th, 2021, that came into our packets, an email from Jennifer Chapman and a letter from Celia Lex. Do any members of the public have any comment on this?
Hi, it's Jennifer, and hopefully you also got the attachments with my email, and really, ultimately, that email communication about the historic district work that was done in 2018 is really a request for that to be on the agenda at some point, just to revisit the 2012 historic district map, and ultimately to revisit then, you know, the 1980s Historic Resource Survey, of which many of the buildings that Judith identified are not on there, but she has identified a lot of buildings as contributing elements to a historic district. She wrote a, you know, just an overall beginning description for her reconnaissance survey to kind of describe how they all tie together as part of architectural history. And I guess the point is that, you know, we do have a district, and it has not had a city ordinance, but we all recognize that there is a downtown historic district that is a concentration of historic resources, and it, just to give it some attention, because there's, you know, continuing potential impacts to that district. I mean, one of the really amazing things is how much of the original streetscape from the 1800s is there, and you have the whole history of development of the city in the context of everything that was going on with Gold Rush and transportation, and just development of Eldorado County. So, you can see that there's a lot of buildings that Judith identified, as well as I highlighted, ones where she talked about a facade, which just means that you've got a historic core with kind of a layer on top on the exterior, so I just was identifying those as restoration potential. And I guess it's just, you know, before it's totally all altered beyond any integrity that could still qualify as a district, I feel the Planning Commission should take an interest in it. And I just wanted you to be aware of the work that was done in 2018, you know, for Friends of Historic Hightown. We didn't have a very large budget, we asked the city for, you know, additional kind of matching funds, and they didn't want to support that. So, what you see as her work was done on a pretty bare-bones GoFundMe campaign, but it has value, I think, and certainly something I hope that you would want to take a look at in a real agenda item. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question of staff, and this is relevant, actually, to the change in the bylaws that we made with regards to matters of Commissioners and Staff. And so, my question is, given what we just heard, in our bylaws, what is Staff's interpretation as to whether or not Commissioners could or should comment on what was just presented now, or if that should be commented on under Matters Before Commissioners and Staff? So, I mean, I have, just to say, I have a couple of comments I'd like to offer based on what was presented on an item that was on the agenda. We can't take action on it, obviously, but certainly it seems that we should be able to comment on it if we wanted to, but I want to make sure I'm in the right place on the agenda to do that.
I guess Staff would strongly recommend that we don't get into commenting and actually discussing the item, because it will be coming before you, so it would be premature, but you can certainly ask questions. Questions like, maybe do you have an estimate of what the item is that has come before you? What is the item that could come before you?
But Pierre, this, I don't know that this item is coming before us, right? This is just something that somebody--
She's referring to Main Street Historic District, and so, you probably recall, because you served on this commission--
Yes, sir.
--when there was a joint meeting between the former Historic Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission, and we have a draft boundary map of the proposed downtown historic commercial district. And so, at some time in the near future, we hope to bring that map to you to formally review and give a formal recommendation for the City Council to adopt.
Okay. I didn't realize that, and I don't want to run afoul of that. And then, I would just, if I may, just take the opportunity to thank Ms. Chapman for her energies. I personally consider her a subject matter expert, and I would hope that as we move forward on this and other issues, that we would look to her to help us in our discussions and guidance, so that's all.
No, if Staff could just echo what you just said, Staff also would like to thank Jennifer Chapman for her work and everything her group is doing. That work will further support the establishment of a downtown historic district.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on written communications? Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move on to our public hearings. The first public hearing we're going to entertain tonight will be for 795 Chamberlain Street, a conditional use permit, number 21-01, for the Verosa Cottage, a request for a B&B. Mr. Painter, do you have the report?
I do. Tonight's request was submitted by Danielle Slater. She is the representative for the 795 Chamberlain Street Property Owner, which is De Torpo LLC. Two bedrooms within the three-bedroom home accommodating no more than four adults are proposed as a bed-and-breakfast guest rooms for overnight accommodation. The applicant would also request to place a plaque to convey the history of the home. However, no details were provided to Staff for you to consider tonight. The parcel is quite small. It's approximately 4,000 square feet of parcel area. The parcel contains an existing approximately 1,200-square-foot, three-bedroom, one-bath house, with covered front-door entry, rear landscape patio, picket, front yard fencing, and a concrete single-car driveway, and an attached single-car garage. Attachment A of the staff report contains the applicant's submittal package, which contains a descriptive narrative of the historic context of the site, including its owners, Josephine and Giacomo Verosa. The Verosa Cottage, a home built in 1916. She's also provided a site and floor plans for your review tonight. The land use and zoning for the site is single-family residential, and the site and neighborhood are within what's called the Sacramento Street-Chamberlain Street Residential Historic District. Tonight's bed-and-breakfast establishment request is before the Commission due to the provisions, criteria, and conditions to establish a bed-and-breakfast use under City Code Section 10411, as well as the Conditional Use Permit Regulations and Procedures under City Code 10-3-6. The Planning Commission has the authority to review and may approve a B&B request that conforms to the set criteria and conditions within City Code. Public notice for this hearing tonight was published in the Mountain Democrat and mailed according to city requirements and procedures. One public comment was received. It is part of the staff report as Attachment B, and it was from Ray and Betty Peterson. After review of the information provided by the applicant, after reviewing the City Code's B&B criteria, its provisions, and regulations, this request can be achieved through adherence with the conditions of approval that Staff's outlined in the staff report, as well as utilizing the parking provisions under City Code Section 1044 that were described in the staff report. The request as condition qualifies as Class 32 In-Fill Development Project, and that the Commission can make findings that the request is exempt from further environmental review per Section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff supports the request. The home would provide an inviting environment for overnight guests that is walkable to downtown Placerville, as well as convenient to travelers along US 50 and State Route 49. The request as condition is consistent with the City Code, therefore, Staff recommends the Commission make the findings on Pages 7 and 8 of the staff report. Then, conditionally approve Conditional Use Permit 21-01, the Verosa Cottage, subject to the conditions provided as Attachment C in the staff report. Ms. Slater is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much. First, do any of the Commissioners have questions for the staff about the report they received?
I had several questions. So, one of the questions that I had is, I just wanted to better understand the differences between short-term vacation rentals, which are currently prohibited, and bed-and-breakfast establishment.
The difference is, our code currently allows for someone to apply for a bed-and-breakfast establishment. The current code, as you know, with the exception of your allowance a few months back, to allow the possibility of someone to apply for a short-term rental within the Central Business District. This particular request is for residential zone, and the criteria that's required in 10-4-11 must be scrutinized and deemed to be met with before the Planning Commission can make a affirmative approval of a Conditional Use Permit for this use. So, the differences are, this particular request, due to the fact that it's in a residential zone, that's the primary difference, but right now, the current code does not permit short-term rentals anywhere within the city, with the exception of a request for a temporary use permit in the Central Business District. Would you like to add something, Director Revas, to that? If you have any comment.
I would just add that the City Council did approve what's called a resolution of intent to amend the code, and so, Staff will be preparing regulations and amend the zoning code to define and further regulate short-term rentals.
Okay.
So, that item will come before you for formal recommendation to the City Council at some time in the future.
Okay. And then, I had a second question related to criteria number eight, the proprietor and owner are required to occupy the property. Have we previous allowed representatives of an owner, rather than the owner themselves, to be the individual living at the property, or would be setting a new precedence for allowing companies or people who don't live in our community to purchase historic homes and utilize them through the decision we make tonight?
Yeah, that's a very interesting question. My look at the bed-and-breakfast establishments that have been requested, considered during my time here in the city, as well as looking back even prior to that, as late as when the code provisions were put into City Code, which is back in 1982. I think the intent, and perhaps at the time, in '82, I don't even know if limited liability company was even a term, to be honest with you, and I think the intent probably was that a property owner, a physical being, with a first and last name, would be operating the use. In this particular case, as you know from the application, it is an LLC, and there is a representative of that LLC who is in the audience this evening, who I'm sure will like to speak to this issue. But to answer your question, I do not believe there has been a LLC or corporation that has applied for a bed-and-breakfast establishment within the city, and as far as the precedent, I think the Commission has the authority to review any application before it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. And then, I just had one last question relating to parking and encroachment permits. Do we allow other businesses to meet their parking space requirements by using space on city streets, and also, do we allow private residents, if they want a dedicated parking space on the street, to apply for an encroachment permit to reserve that space in the street in front of their home?
There are instances where, well, categorically, any member of the public, the code provisions do not distinguish between a commercial location or a residential location, with the exception of that it has to be a non-residential use. of that it has to be a non-residential use. And this particular request is considered by staff as a commercial endeavor. They are collecting revenue from the renting of rooms. So, there certainly is a provision, and allowances for any commercial venture to, if they need, in this particular case, due to the parcel is so small, that perhaps this provision is there to, as a situation, to assist that property owner and/or their representative to meet their parking needs.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all my questions.
I'd like to follow up on that encroachment permit issue. That's something new I haven't come across before. When the applicant, if it's awarded, then the encroachment permit is just for the use of that house, that structure? No other neighbors can park there? Will it be, you know, dedicated for, like, have the address parking reserved for this address? Or could neighbors, if they had a guest and the spot was available, would they be able to access it?
Director Rivas might have something to say about this, but I don't believe the encroachment permit would dictate or specify that that space is only allowed for the parking of the vehicle to serve that particular use. I don't think there will be a no-parking sign, with the exception of those people who want to utilize the potential service that this bed and breakfast may offer. I don't think there is a distinction there where we would preclude a neighborhood, a neighbor, from, like you said, having a function and that space is available to park their vehicle there. There are some no-parking areas within that street, but not in front of this particular home. Do you have anything to add?
I would agree with Mr. Painter. Basically, we have a situation where if there is a guest of the bed and breakfast, they could park legally anywhere on a city street, as long as they're complying with the parking regulation. So, a car could sit there conceivably for 72 hours, at which point, after that time, if it hasn't moved, it could be subject to citation. But the only instances where I think the city has looked at regulating on-street parking, for one, I remember in the past when there was an issue with parking along Acacia and some of the surrounds because of the students' parking in the neighborhoods, that the residents then didn't have place at the park. And so, the city did have a program where parking permits were issued to the residents that lived on Acacia to prevent students of the high school from parking there, that kind of a situation. You also have a situation where on Coloma Street, and there's maybe others, where there is no onsite access to the parcel, to the properties. So, along Coloma, for instance, there are a number of homes that have no onsite access. So, anybody who lives in those homes, whether they're the ones that reside in the particular house or their guests, they have to drive around and find available parking, wherever that may be, where they can legally park. And so, in this case, I think it's the same sort of thing. I think the city would acknowledge that this is a commercial use, but they're granting an encroachment permit so that they are able to park, and I'm not sure where else it would go beyond that, but it's just more of an acknowledgement that their guests are permitted then the park anywhere legally on that street.
So, just a couple of items. I want to go back to Commissioner Gottberg's question regarding item eight, which in terms of a criterion for a B&amp;B, the proprietor and owner are required to occupy the property. And it seems to me that, based upon your representation, Andrew, as to when this language came into play, it predated perhaps some of the current legal formations that we have now. And I think it could become problematic. I think Commissioner Gottberg's concern is legitimate. It's not specific to this particular applicant this evening, but I do think it speaks to, it may be something we heard earlier this evening in open forum regarding the concerns that are happening in, say, South Lake Tahoe. So, I think defining and determining what actually proprietor and owner means, in the new parlance of an LLC, for example, it could mean that one of the managers of the LLC has to reside there, right? So, this is something for counsel, legal counsel, to look at and figure it out, but I think it could be, in fact, problematic. On that point, and this is kind of an aside, I guess, while I see how a short-term rental could not be a B&amp;B, is it possible that a B&amp;B could apply for a short-term rental? That actually is probably a sillier question, now that I just, in my head, it sounded great. I'm going to withdraw the question. That was a silly question. The other thing, though, with the parking, the parking issue seems to be a bit problematic to me in that the parking configuration with the encroachment. First of all, staff is saying that this is not a gift or a special benefit, right? I kind of got that insinuation from the answer, so I won't ask that question, but that's something running through my mind, to make sure that we're not providing a special benefit. But if that parking space is required in order for them to meet the parking requirement, then why wouldn't that parking be designated for this particular business? I think that was the question, as opposed to be left open. And as I hear, if we can condition that, I'm thinking we would need to condition that. Otherwise, they're not meeting their parking requirements sometimes, particularly if somebody else parks there.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the commission does have its authority to condition the request as such. Staff has, and the applicant has provided in their site plan, where they can meet that in front of their home. It's delineated on the site plan, and it is scaled out to meet our minimum standard. So, it does not encumber parking in front of the driveway. So, it's westerly of the driveway, but out in front of the house itself. So, yeah, the commission could certainly condition the project accordingly.
And just to affirm, we're comfortable that this is not providing some special benefit or gift.
No, the provisions in the code would allow an applicant to request this upon the approval of the Planning Commission, and of course, obtaining the encroachment permit from the engineering, city engineer.
Okay. Commissioner List, do you have any questions?
Can I throw one more little parking guy at you? I was wondering about the space that is committed at 791 Chamberlain Street. What would happen if they sold that property?
Staff actually covers that scenario as a condition of approval. No problem. I don't have the condition in front of me. Well, I do, I can look for it. But if that circumstance were to happen, then it technically would be a violation of the conditional use. And therefore, there are mechanisms to get that corrected. The property owner could try to obtain another encroachment permit. They could, I don't know, seek to buy out the other property to find an additional parking space within 300 feet, or reduce the capacity of the B&amp;B by reducing the number of rooms for rent. That would be another option. So, there is a mechanism for that to...
With sincere apologies for somehow missing that. Usually, I'm very detailed in the reading there. Okay, good. So, if there's no further questions from commissioners to staff, then we will go ahead and allow the applicant to come up and present.
Thank you very much. I am so excited to be here, and I feel very grateful for this opportunity. I moved here, probably saw in the notes, moved here about six and a half years ago, but I lived here back in the '70s and went to rescue junior high. So, it's a wonderful full circle to be back. And in the six and a half years, well, in about a week of being here, I absolutely fell in love with Placerville. And my focus is how I can contribute. That's all that I do in thinking of what can I do for this beautiful city, and because it's done so much for me and giving me my most favorite place I've ever had to live. And from the very first, I say this about the first fundraiser over at the fairgrounds, I remember sitting there, looking around, going, "This is extraordinary." It's extraordinary, the generosity in this city, in this county, in terms of watching every, it was actually a women's fund meeting that someone had invited me to as a new resident. And I remember sitting there, being so touched by the camaraderie, by the spirit, the generosity, the saying the Pledge of Allegiance, even, everything was beautiful. And so, I'm so grateful to be here, and so, everything I do in my business, in my life, in this city, is to think of, okay, how can I contribute? How can I do even more? And so, that drives most everything I do, from a motive, I've always wanted to have a cottage, which I mentioned that in my little narrative, and it was a dream to have a cottage. As it turned out, I never had purchased real estate on my own and hadn't even considered it, but within about, I'd say, six months, I went, this is the first place, I'm going to buy real estate, I'm going to invest, it'll be a privilege to invest in the city. And as it turns out, my mother and sister, they both live in the Bay Area, and they've had health issues, and at some point, it seems that I will care for them if that's how it works. And so, I thought, well, this is perfect. And so, I went to Chamberlain, and the house next door, what I call the bungalow, was for sale. And as it turned out, I was able to purchase both houses because they were getting the cottage ready for sale. That was Anna Guaramendi. And so, just how everything keeps unfolding, and how everything that we've done in the city and the county has just been an absolute pleasure. And it just keeps inspiring me to want to do more and more. And to come full circle and to ask for permission to do a bed and breakfast is, it's so exciting to me, because my favorite thing is to welcome people. I want people to come to Placerville. I want people to see it and to feel welcomed and spoiled and celebrated, which is something I love to do. And I'm fortunate to have, this is one of my homes, and that's how I like to run my home, is as this would be as a business, to run it like it's my home. And when people come in to feel, and I think you got to see some pictures of the inside, and it's even cuter since, and I make sure all the art on the wall is local art, and I'm so excited, there's, you know, to be able to refer the businesses and host people in this cottage, and I'm in love with this cottage. It's adorable. As far as the history of it, as I didn't mention how I would put the sign up, I wanted it just to be something subtle, maybe a beautiful plaque on the side, nothing illuminated, as I wouldn't have done it anyway. And it goes back to my connection with Josephine. When I found out that it was purchased with $1,500 a gold coin, and she owned it, she purchased it back then, that was even more, to add to the full circle of this whole thing. My first real estate that I've ever purchased, it was her, she owned it. I purchased it from Anna Guaramendi, who also purchased it on her own before that, and there was a history of that. And for whatever reason, that made something that was so sweet even more dear. In terms of the reason it's one to four adults, it's a small house, as it was mentioned, and it's perfect to have two of the bedrooms be for the same group, so it's not like different people. It is so small, it's so intimate, that in the way that I've remodeled it and done the improvements, it's just so inviting for just one group. So, whether it's one person renting it, the whole place, the whole 1,200 square feet, or four people, I think it's perfect for one to three girlfriends, or two couples, or however it works out. As far as my history with, and any concerns, if anybody has concerns about who and how the rentals go, I do have a very successful track record of all five stars. I do have other properties that are VRBOs, and that even in Tahoe, as it was mentioned, with the concerns, we have, I have very, very specific requirements in the contracts, and have never had a problem. We require a large deposit, there's a whole protocol that goes along with it, and even so much as that we do business with a large cleaning company in Tahoe, and they've even reached out to me and said, "You're the only place that doesn't get damaged," or, nothing ever goes on at your place up there. And so, they, I shared some of the, they asked me to share some of the best practices with some of the other owners there, because they're just not requiring what we require, because it's my home, it's my asset, I want to welcome, I want it to be a win-win. I want people to be able to make memories and have these special moments, and it's all how you set it up. So, I feel that I can contribute a strong track record in not only being respectful of the community, contributing, and making sure that it's a peaceful and respectful stay, that benefits everybody. As far as the neighbors, I really appreciate the support. Of course, I own the house next door, and then the cottage to the left, as it mentions in the notes, they were very supportive of it, and appreciative of improving those two homes. They didn't look anything like that four years ago. You probably could have seen them from the back, from Main Street. And so, I'm very proud of them now. I put a lot of love and time and investment in them. And then the neighbors directly across the street that own both houses across the street, same thing, they've been so supportive. And it was fun to hear that another neighbor on the street wrote in. So, I think that might cover it. If there's any questions?
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Friend?
All right, I'll start. Ms. Slater, is it?
Yes, Danielle.
Danielle. So, I'm really excited about this, and the story that you project with this is just fantastic. It was really, the detail that you provided, it was really great to read all of it. Question for you, you realize you're in the historic district, and you realize that if you need to make exterior changes or improvements, that there are requirements, possibly even restrictions. You're aware of that.
Happy to support, yeah.
I would like to introduce you to Ms. Jennifer Chapman, who's sitting in the back there, I believe, and she is a wonderful resource on historic stuff, and I think you will become great pals. So, I don't see any issues with the project right now. Some may come up, but at this point, it's really great, and I like the energy, and I like the story and everything that goes along with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners to the applicant?
So, I had a couple of questions. One was just related to, again, the, would a proprietor be living full-time at the property?
Only when guests are there.
Okay. And is that person's...
Well, I can't say, I'm sorry, I should back up a bit. Definitely when guests are there. It's a home I love, so I will be there for fun. I love to have girlfriends over. So, yes, when guests are there, official guests.
Okay. And is that person somebody who has, holds ownership in the LLC?
It will be me until I get more clarification on whether it can be me or my sister. I would like this set up for her, because even in my vision of how this will work, this would be perfect, because she is also born to be, born to host and loves to love on people, so it would be perfect for her. So, however, I would just get more clarification if she, I'm the sole person on LLC, that was for just the reasons of an LLC.
Yep.
But I would find out if, since it would end up with, it's willed to her and my nieces and nephews anyway, so if I had to transfer the ownership to do so, it was meant for her and my mother anyway. So, I would find that out. I don't have a clear answer, because I'm not sure, but that's the plan.
Okay. And then, just kind of going back to the parking, is there any possibility of an additional parking space on the other properties that you have?
Well, the one right next to it, the greenhouse, the one I call the bungalow, that has, it has a regular width parking lot, but then it opens up, and it could be the second parking. I just wouldn't want to impose on my renters. I love my renters, and I love, I know they would accommodate, I just feel like that's more accommodation, but it would just, it's whatever would work, because there's still a garage at the cottage, and there's still a single driveway that, you know, fits another car. It's just lovely to have that spot right in front of the house that doesn't, you know, for the extra parking. Four people is either one car, or, you know, it's also easy to ask, because it's in the city, it's also easy to ask everybody to come in one car. Often, if they're coming out of town, they are. That's not the case in my other homes, where they might come in several cars, but it's not a difficult thing to coordinate with renters.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. You don't live full-time at either one of those homes. You have renters at 791 next door, and you don't live at 795. You would just be there when you have guests.
It's one of my homes. Yeah, it's my favorite home. It's one of my homes, yes.
But your work takes you to other towns where you're managing?
We also have a home in Tahoe, and we also have a home... We also have a home in Tahoe, and we also have a home in Cold Springs, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then I will go ahead, if there's no further questions from commissioners to the applicant, open this up for public comment. So thank you, Ms. Slater, and we may hear from you again if necessary. Are there any members of the public that would wish to address the commission on this topic? Please remember to keep your comments germane to the topic at hand and limited to three minutes.
Kirk Smith, I live up the street, I know the area, I've known a number of people who lived there. One of my friends lived a few doors away, and she had a number of sub-tenants at various times, and there was no parking problem. So a couple months ago, when you had the Airbnb unit, I just as enthusiastically opposed that. Why the difference? In this instance, the owner has demonstrated a commitment to the historic character of the neighborhood and of that house. And by being on the property helps to ensure the integrity of that property for the future. And it's just exactly what we want for short-term housing, alternatives to hotels that we don't have. So that's why. As far as the issue about the LLC, I, I think it's a good question, but as we've learned, right now, there's only one person, and the suggestion that if it were to change, it'd be family. But that is a good concern because you want to avoid the situation where we have multiple speculators coming in from out-of-town type of thing. That doesn't seem to be the problem here. As far as the questions on parking, I've been to, I can think of at least three yard sales over the years on that street, which means extra cars coming in, and there was never a parking problem. Sure, there'd be more cars parked than usual. And I would not suggest having a parking spot designated, and here's the reason. During the day, you, in fact, for days, you might not have any visitors there and might not need it. So why take up a space to designate for a particular use when it's not necessary? Why tie it up? Because then you're tying it up for other neighbors. Also, we've all had the situation where we go to a social function in our neighborhood, as I know I have recently, where there might be two or three dozen cars parked outside in this residential area. Well, that doesn't happen all the time, but when it does happen, people are able to accommodate each other and don't mind walking a, a block or two away. So I don't see that as a problem. It's a great contribution. Now, the reason I had a different view on the other property is that entailed displacing people. Also, I, to give you my perspective, I'm a capitalist. I bought houses to rent when I was in high school. My family's owned them all my life, I manage them now. But I have a conscience, and right now, we have to be concerned about what happens during the midst of recovering from the worst pandemic in a century, when the moratorium on evictions is suspended, when that, when that gets, goes away. If that happens all of a sudden, we're going to have the worst situation on homelessness than we've had since 2008 or worse. That's something to be conscious of. So that was another concern. And the other is, we should have short-term housing available in situations like this where it is in a residential area, where people want to have that feeling of being at home. So that's why it's a compliment to the community and why I would encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Julie Robinson. I asked that the city do a deep dive into their Airbnbs and the short-term rentals before approving 795 Chamberlain as an Airbnb. As the occupancy requirement seems a bit murky and maybe hard to be enforced. As far as I know, the house across the street, that's 794, is, functions as an, as a VBR or an Airbnb. Is that legal? How do we currently police such use of residences? When Placerville evaluates short-terms rentals as a whole, I ask that the community benefit, the climate or environmental impacts are considered too versus just the monetary benefits and only presented from a third-party company like Airbnb. I think we have to look at the good of our community for the good of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wishing to address the commission on this topic? Okay, seeing nine, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment and return the topic to the commissioners for discussion and action. Do any commissioners have any?
I'll go ahead and start. I mean, I have concerns related to item eight. I love bed and breakfasts. I think they're a great solution for our city, for tourist accommodation, because you have a person living there full-time typically in our other bed and breakfast, so you're not impacting the housing stock in any way, and you're inviting tourists to come in and, you know, live with or visit people who live here full-time. So my concern really comes back to criteria eight on this and the intent of it. And I think this is a good project, so it kind of puts me in a, in a difficult kind of feeling about it because I, I like the project. But I'm kind of concerned about whether or not it meets the intent of the proprietor and owner are required to occupy the property. And I'm not sure that it does in this case. And then I also have concerns about the parking. Just me personally, I went out to do a site visit, there was no parking on the street, there's no parking signs from the city to about 40 feet right before this, on the north side of the street, there's no parking on the south side of the street the entire length. You know, I happened to go on a Sunday afternoon, but all of the parking on that street was taken at the time. So I am kind of concerned about, you know, the other residents that live on that street having the ability to park their cars, have their guests park their cars, and the impacts of this of using the city street. So those are sort of my initial thoughts on this.
I think I've come from a very similar perspective on my review, the same concerns you had, first to the impact on housing stock, I think that's, that may be my biggest concern. This is a very modest home. Many of the BnBs that, that I've stayed at and the ones that I'm aware of in Placerville, they're, they're much larger, and so they easily accommodate husband, wife, or a small family, and they have extra rooms that are going unused, where this is a very modest home, three bedrooms. When I look at it, I, I actually kind of wonder how it would function as a, a short-term rental, the location of the bedrooms, one bathroom for different guests, and I think it, it's going to take a unique scent of guests to, to really appreciate this house. I admire Danielle and your appreciation for our historical districts and how you want to preserve them. That's wonderful, but to just follow up on what Nicole mentioned, this impact on housing stock, when I look at this home, it's, it's almost like, when you said that you weren't going to occupy it full-time, I see this as pulling a, a house out of circulation and with the run-up in prices in real estate and the fact that we're not really building many houses under 2,000 square feet, this is, occupies a very special place in our housing market, and the idea that on the days that it's not rented for your guests, it would just stand empty, to me, that seems like it's not the best use of this structure. We, we really are, anecdotally, I haven't done a strict survey on our supply and demand, but there is demand for housing in Placerville, and it's going to be a while before you can catch up. So I'm really uneasy with the idea of this just standing empty when there's not a guest, you know, visiting. The parking also is a big concern. I also did a site visit, and it's, it's a narrow street. Another thing we have to think about is not just inconveniencing the other neighbors who, you know, maybe have gotten kind of used to having that spot, is one of the few on that side of, on the north side of Chamberlain. So they may, you know, they may need to use that themselves, but also just from a congestion standpoint and emergency services, many of our streets in Placerville are undersized, and so when I think about, you know, dedicating that and having to use that on a, a more regular basis, I, you know, I, I wonder about the encroachment permit process and whether, whether or not we should even require it be dedicated for the cottage. So those are my concerns. So thank you, Nicole, for bringing them up, and I just wanted to, you know, kind of substantiate my thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much. Thoughts from this side of the dais, or?
I'm okay.
Good? Commissioner Friend?
It doesn't seem to me that is the prerogative of this commission to dictate to an owner of private property when they must live there, and if they're not living there X number of hours or days per week, that they should do something else with it. So I'm a little bit, in fact, I'm, I'm very concerned about the direction that conversation's going. This, this home, first of all, may be made available to family, so it, it's not in the inventory, and, and the proposed action is not going to impact the inventory one way or the other. The question on the table is, is the requested, the proposed activity allowable within ordinance? Okay? Is it allowable by what the city considers to be acceptable? And it seems that it is. With regard to the question, item eight, it's my understanding that staff believes that condition is met. I, I think, and as an aside, we all agree, including staff, that it perhaps needs to be redefined or refined a bit for the modern day, but I don't see that it's in conflict here. With regards to the parking, we can allocate the space, and if we don't allocate the space, the space is already being used by other vehicles, so I, I think that kind of negates the concern about the emergency vehicles coming in because the spaces, the space is being used anyway. And, and I asked directly to staff if this kind of, this is not a gift, if staff says, no, this is absolutely allowable and, and can be conditioned, and, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So my inclination is to approve the project, and then the only condition I would add, as I brought up earlier, would be that, that parking spot does need to be indicated as assigned to this residence for this, because it's a commercial business now. And, and while I'm not really happy about doing that, it is allowable. I'm understanding that there are tenants in the bungalow, I guess, as you call it, the bungalows, sort of people that are renting there, and while that, she could use that as a parking space, and maybe we should talk about that a little bit more because it's not going to be used all the time, and that the tenants are willing to accommodate on a periodic, and maybe they can get a little break in their rent or something when that happens, I don't know. We can have that conversation. But in terms of the use, I'm completely comfortable with the use as proposed, and then we, we can talk about the parking. Other than that, I'm totally inclined to approve the project.
Okay. I kind of fell in the middle of, of those two things too. I think under the current provisions and ordinances that it is an allowable project, and I'm sympathetic to the housing concerns, and I'm sympathetic, obviously, to the parking concerns as well, but I do think as listed, that the project seems to fit within the, the ordinances as outlined at this time, or I should say, the provisions in the, in the code. I do have concern about having like an actual allocated space on the street that says, this is for Rosa Cottage or whatever it may be called, finally. So I do think that that should be something that we should touch on because, I mean, even recently, I had a neighbor put up a sign in front of their house on public parking, trying to say that it was for them, and someone promptly ripped it down. So I, I'm very hesitant to designate a parking spot for them, but I am inclined to support the project. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion? Further discussion, questions?
Is anyone willing to perhaps offer some language with regards to the parking component? I have to get there before I can begin crafting.
Staff could make a, a brief comment regarding the parking. The city would probably require that some sort of a lease agreement would occur if the city is to designate a piece of public right-of-way to an individual business, that that would be probably under some kind of lease agreement or part of the encroachment permit where they're actually, you know, paying a certain amount of money to the city as compensation for that parking spot.
But it would be a physically noticed designated spot for the BnB?
You know, I haven't thought that far through, maybe Mr. Painter has, but this is just more off the cuff.
I guess what I'm, what?
Madam Chair, may I ask, you used the term lease, so that's a very specific term. Is there a financial component to that lease? And is the city then, aside from the parking garage, maybe some parking other areas, are we in the, the habit, and this isn't a negative, but are we in the habit of leasing out spaces?
Yes, there are areas within the city where the city does lease parking spaces to individuals.
And is there a financial benefit to the city for that?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
It's to recoup the cost of maintaining the facility.
All right.
It's not to be a moneymaker.
Right, so, I mean, that, to me, that, I, I would condition this that's going to be a leased spot. Since the city does that, I think that'd be the direction that I would go personally.
Is the applicant aware of what that cost might be in agreement? So it's just one?
Yeah, encroachment permits temporarily, I'm concerned about that term.
I guess one of my questions?
I'd be prepared to make a motion, Madam Chair.
I have one question, is, so if it's, just to get some clarity on the, if it was a leased spot in front of them, would they have like towing capabilities if someone was parked there?
I would assume so, they would have a sign indicating that if you're not authorized to park there, you're subject to being towed.
And so if the project is approved and just a person never stays in the BnB, which could, you know, who knows how often people are going to be there, would it just be a leased spot that no other people are allowed to park with? I guess I'm just envisioning people parking there when there's not someone there, but then someone's there, and it's confusing as a resident. I just, it's a little hazy for me there, and it may not be totally pertinent, but before we agree, I guess, to that parking?
Yeah, I would say be similar to the top floor of the parking garage, those are all leased spaces. So it could be possible that nobody parks up there and they're all empty.
On the public street.
So I have a, I have a neighbor that parks his rather large truck, hypothetical, right across the street from me. And I just, I don't want to look at that anymore, so I come to the city and I, I ask for, I ask, ask to have that spot dedicated to me, and I'm going to pay a fee. Therefore, he can't park there anymore. It's not attached to my property. Where do we stand on something like that?
Yeah, I see where you're going, it is problematic. My recommendation would be, I don't believe that staff is really ready to adequately address this issue regarding this parking space. So I think maybe on this item, we would request that we, that we're able to come back to this commission with an appropriate condition that would satisfy these concerns, because I think this is sort of even new to staff. Typically, we're not in the business of, you know, design. I can recall many, many years ago, and this is probably 15 going on 20 years ago, there was a real desire for the residents on Columbus Street who didn't have access to their property. There was no onsite parking, you couldn't even drive into the property. So they wanted to have the city designate parking spots just for them, and the city said no to that, just for these reasons that you're, that you, where you're going with that questioning. City did not do that.
So, Madam Chair, that, that's an interesting direction you want to go, Pierre, to say, you know what, we're really not sure about how we're going to address the parking, so maybe we need to bring all that all back to you. My question then to my fellow commissioners, the parking aside, if we structured, if a motion were structured as, to approve the request, with the exception of the parking is to be addressed administratively by staff, but it may not include street parking without approval of the commission. So if, if staff and the applicant come up with a parking arrangement that does not involve street parking, then we wouldn't be so concerned about it, then, then we're done here. If however, they come up with a plan that involves street parking with the applicant, it would be compelled to come back to us. It might just, just kind of a sense if the commission would be willing to then move forward so we don't have to bring this, the whole thing back to us another time. Because I'd be happy to make that motion if that would suffice.
So to be clear, if the staff could work it out with private? So to be clear, if the staff could work it out with private parking only, to allocate the parking spots, it would not come back to us, but if there is street parking involved, then the project approval would return?
Yeah, so this, I'm dealing specifically with condition 3A. And 3A, my motion would read essentially, 3A shall be addressed between the staff and the applicant administratively, unless the plan would require the use, dedicated use of street property, in which case, that parking plan would require commission approval. So we could move forward with everything else, because I think the only thing that's really, aside from the, you know, the value assessments, and I'm not challenging anybody on that, but in the technical aspects of this deal with the parking component, from what I understand, and so, and even staff is not entirely confident about where they're at with that. Okay, that's cool. Let's move the whole thing forward, and just have the parking component either addressed by staff, unless they need that parking space in the street, then it's got to come back to us for review and approval. That's where I would be. So I don't know how, if that's okay with staff, you could work with something like that? Because if you can, I'll make the motion. I don't know where it'll go, but I'll make it.
I'm not sure that we, I'm clear on...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So are we, are we asking for a dedicated spot?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying the part, the, the meeting of the parking requirement cannot be addressed this evening, and staff has indicated that they're not even really sure about what was proposed by staff is workable, or it's got nuances they need to deal with, right? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, so what I'm, here's my, where I'm going is, let's forget about the parking component. Let's approve the project with the requirement that staff come up with the applicant with a workable parking solution. However, if that parking solution still requires use of the public street, that piece would have to come back to us for approval. That's what I'm saying.
I'm not sure that there are other options available. I think staff has outlined, you know, what is readily available.
She said she's got the tenant next door, that, and so she may, she may have discussions, we can't do that, we can't have that negotiation right now here, but she could have that negotiation with staff, say, look, I work with my tenant, I'll be able to meet that parking requirement there. Then it's done. I'm just saying...
But then if the house next door, let's say they, for whatever reason, within the next two years, the term of the permit to be a B and B, suppose it changes hands. Are we asking Ms. Slater to get some sort of easement that goes with 791 that allows for this, to fulfill the parking requirement? I'm not sure what, I want something that's easy for city staff to make sure that, you know, is enforced, and we don't make a worse problem, you know, we, the ordinance says how many spaces are to be dedicated to the B and B. Staff has outlined what, you know, is probably, a workable solution.
I'm happy to go with that, except that Pierre just said, he wasn't sure that that was a workable deal. Now, if it is, if you can live with what you gave us, I'll make a motion to, but I have a little bit of modifying language with regards to the lease, but I thought, I heard you say, Pierre, correct me if I'm wrong, that staff wasn't entirely sure how this was going to work, and needed to noodle through it some more. That puts me, as a commissioner, in kind of a difficult position to make a vote on something that staff is saying, eh, we got to noodle through it a bit more.
I think Mr. Painter had... Mr. Painter?
Mr. Painter did show me the section of the code that says exactly what's being proposed, so just in my, in my experience, personal experience with the city is, I'm not, you know, I haven't seen this, so, but it looks like it's in conformity with what's codified in the code.
And I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Because I thought there was confusion on staff. So, and I don't know where this is going to go, it may go down in flames, but I'm going to move that we approve conditional use permit, CUP 21-01, Verosa Cottage, adopting the staff report as part of the public record, and the conditions as contained therein, I believe they're in attachment C and attachment B, and then with regard specifically to condition 3A 3, dealing with one space shall be provided within the city's Chamberlain Street right-of-way, so that's the reference, that this, the language that needs to be added to that item 3A 3 is, this shall be constructed as a lease with the city, and the city shall provide adequate signage as may be necessary to indicate that it's a leased space. So that's my motion.
I would just make one clarification, if I may, Madam Chair, that that would be at the applicant's expense. The city is not going to install signage under its own dime.
So I guess I don't need a second to have this discussion with staff. So, like, when you have leased spaces in the parking garage, the city doesn't do that, the applicant, or those people who own those spaces, get a sign that says leased?
No, the city installs those.
So why wouldn't the city do this one?
Because this is for the sole purpose of an individual in front of a private business, so...
All right, then I'll modify my motion, that the space shall have signage adequate to indicate it is a leased space.
Right. What the city would typically do is provide, you know, standard elevation, template, if you will, of the sign and how it's supposed to be written, but the applicant would have to pay for that signage.
Okay, so that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Sorry, I'm just really, clarification, so a leased space is still on the option that's dedicated to the B and B on the public street?
Is codified in our, in the code, is pointed out to me by Mr. Painter, that it's through an encroachment permit. So whatever mechanism, then, through that encroachment permit, we would make it so. It's allowed in the code?
Can staff interject, not on what Director Rivas was just saying, but regarding parking, so that I hope it's clear. There, the applicant can show, and has shown in her site plan, that she can park two vehicles on the site, one in the garage and one in the single car driveway. The staff report mentions a code section in the parking regulations where a property owner who has property within, I believe the radius is 300 feet, from the subject site in which the parking's required, may provide parking, if it's, if it can be shown, I'm paraphrasing what it says in the code. That is not discretion by you. That's by right. And she has provided evidence to this staff member, and I've been to the site, and as Danielle described, the neighbor site, the cottage, as it was described, can park two cars in tandem, and one not in tandem, for a total of three. What you all probably know is, in the parking requirement for a home in the city, is two parking stalls, two parking spaces. We have a different ratio for, for an apartment, but in this case, it's clearly a single-family residence, and so the neighbor, the cottage, would have to have, at a minimum, two stalls there, plus they have the ability for a third stall. Really, the question before you, and the discretion that you have, would be on the fourth parking space, or the first, if you wanted to go that route, and that's in the public right-of-way. And so the applicant is proposing to utilize the provision in the code that gives you the authority to approve a parking space within the city right-of-way, upon obtaining an encroachment permit, not from Development Services, in this case, but from, from the Engineering Department, who administers those. I was asked earlier by Member Gottberg about whether parking spaces have been so deemed under encroachment permit, and I could not think of any. However, there are other things that do, that do receive encroachment permits, and they are very site-specific, specifically, if this helps the commission, and I think it will, because most of your work during your time here will really be related to commercial uses. I mean, I think that's probably true. Most, most of the projects that come before you are commercial-related. If you really think about it, probably well over majority are in that regard. And on Placerville Drive, there are numerous instances where there are business signs that are in the city right-of-way. Each of those requires an encroachment permit, and it's very specific as to where that encroachment exists, and the allowance for that business owner to have a business sign in the right-of-way, with the caveat that, at the time, the city wants to use that right-of-way for whatever purpose, widen the street, put in a sidewalk, et cetera, the permit is revoked, and that sign goes away at no cost to the city. That's strictly their, their responsibility. So they get the, the pleasure of utilizing a space within the city right-of-way for a period of time, to advertise a business that's on or adjacent to the site. I bring that up just because, to give you an example, that there are other encroachment permit activities in the city, and I think, where I'm going with this, is that a space, a parking space, can be delineated as if it was a, for instance, a monument sign or a pole sign along a city street. So I think that is under the purview of the commission. You could designate that through, through language. I don't know if that changes the motion maker, maker's motion.
What I want to say is, I hope to pull a really big bass out of these weeds. That's what I want to say, because these are weeds. The challenge that I had with how this was presented was that, in the absence of a clearly delineated sign, any member of the public could park, right? And then they would not be in compliance with meeting their parking requirement, right? That's, that's the problem. The reason for designating the street space was so that they would meet the parking requirement. So, I'm going to modify my motion. You have my motion as it stands. I'm still on item 3A 3, and I'm going to add additional language. Alternatively, the applicant may work with staff to demonstrate the ability to meet the four-vehicle parking requirement without the need for a leased dedicated space, period. And I don't know if this second, or my motion, would accept that language.
I accept.
And the intent of that language, Madam Chair, and for my fellow commissioners, is, okay, we give them this one way to go, but if they can be creative and work together and not have to do it, because I, to be perfectly honest, I'm a little bit confounded at this point, but it sounds like the leased encroachment is okay, it's codified, we can do it that way, but this gives another opportunity to do some other things, and flexibility, provides some flexibility, so that's...
So we have a motion and a second. Is everyone clear on what the motion is?
I do have one more comment.
Yes, Mr. Painter.
Before we vote, before you vote.
I also have a comment. Go ahead, Andrew.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not clear if we're requiring them to dedicate that parking spot or not. If it's, if it's going to be signed, and so that only the occupants of 795 can park there, then we're essentially giving them, someone mentioned, a gift, or allowing only this business owner to use that piece of a city street.
But they're leasing it, there's a cost.
Well, that's what I'm not clear on. Are we requiring, if it's going to be signed so that only those occupants of that house are going to use it, then we, the city should recover some, you know, cost of maintaining it. I think that's only fair to the city and to other people, you know, who use city streets. So I'm not sure that your motion is getting us to that end. The way it's written, with the encroachment permit, actually, I'm not sure with the encroachment...
I use the term lease. I use the term lease. It's a lease with the city, as the city has with other properties. So I don't know what those arrangements are, but I use, because staff used the term lease specifically, I use the term lease specifically as well. So, and I mentioned, a lease is a very specific legal term. It implies it's a contract. So I presume that a contract also comes with a monetary, somebody mentioned, there is a financial impact, so it's not a gift. Okay, now, whether or not the lease amounts enough to cover whatever costs you just mentioned, I think that's...
Would the encroachment permit essentially recover enough of money to do whatever minor ma, it's not going to be much, it's just, you know, a few linear feet along the street. So is the encroachment permit, is that a one-time thing, or is this an ongoing, like, if you leased a spot in the parking garage, that's an ongoing payment?
Sure, sure. The, this request was routed to our Engineering Division, or Department for Comment. They did not have comments, but I did have a conversation with one of their assistant engineers, and I asked him the question that, should the commission approve this request with the encroachment permit allowance along the city street? His response was that they were perhaps looking at a yearly permit process. So every year, there would have to be a reapplication for the encroachment permit. Now, that's not a monthly lease, or, that's far as I could tell from, from the context of our conversation, but we didn't really talk about leases, we were talking about a permit, which allows the permit holder to do something, under the provisions of whatever conditions were imposed. So, to, to not muddy the waters any further than that, I think there are some questions, with the exception of the motion and second, so technically, that's on the table and should be acted upon, but from staff's perspective, I will reiterate what Director Rivas mentioned earlier. You have some questions, all of you, that perhaps we need better answers to provide you, so that you can make an educated and reasonable response to, to the request before you, and how the city would respond, in this case, involving an encroachment permit. So, speaking for Director Rivas, the staff would suggest that you postpone this item for a couple of weeks to allow us to come back, perhaps even bring the city engineer here if needed, to, to maybe answer those questions that, that definitively, how their department would handle, whether it would be a lease, whether it would be a dedicated spot, or whether she would just say, she being Rebecca Neves, the city engineer, anywhere on the street.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
This commission has a history of not wanting to postpone projects, not wanting to cancel meetings, wanting to move business forward, in deference to the public, in deference to the applicants. It's a little bit discouraging, and I hate to use that word, but it's a little bit discouraging to be given something to vote on, and then have said, you know, maybe we didn't really process this adequately. That's frustrating, I will say that, and for me, I don't know about for anybody else, and I would imagine for the applicant. I would think the motion allows plenty of flexibility to come up with an alternative. You can either, you can even just pull that, or we could just pull that section out and move forward with everything else, like I proposed earlier. To hold the whole thing up, because on the one parking space, really, it bothers me. It really, really does. It's fairly clear to me where we can go and what the flexibility is, so, Madam Chair, I'm just going to ask you to call the questions, we can move on with it, sorry.
Okay, and to be clear, the motion that's on the table and seconded is to adopt the staff record and conditions in the attachments B and C with regards to 3A, number three. The will, the applicant will establish a lease with the city via an encroachment permit, which would be reviewed annually? Is that what you said?
Whatever their mechanism is, it sounds like they have a process.
Or alternatively, may, the applicant may work with the staff to demonstrate the ability to meet the four designated parking spots without the leased spot.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Madam Chair, before you call the question, I just want to, perhaps we entertain a competing motion, this has become very unclear. The staff report was very clear what the mechanism was, and appreciate, you know, we, this project should be allowed to move forward, but there, the way this motion is worded, it's too uncertain... the way this motion is worded, it's too uncertain exactly. I don't even sure, not sure that we're giving you clear direction what it is we want out of this leased space versus encroachment permit. So I think that it would be, if your goal is to move this project forward, let's just go ahead and accept the conditionally, the permits, obviously, the conditions under the permit as written. I think perhaps the, now that we know that an encroachment permit is an annual thing, the city obviously is recovering some money, so this dedicated spot, it could be that we, in our lack of understanding, don't, you know, don't recognize that the city has this issue taken care of. So I would prefer to, either we allow city staff to work on this and work with the applicant. If it's a leased space, you know, I don't know that Ms. Slater wants to take on additional expense for a leased space versus an encroached permit, or encroachment permit. So rather than making it just open-ended, I'd rather we consider just adopting the language as presented under, in the staff report. So that's my final comment.
I'd be happy to remove my language and both in the original as well as the second, if that's the direction you would go.
And Mr. List?
Basically, accepting what staff gave us right here.
In a sense, you've called for the question. So I think we need to vote on it. And if it doesn't pass, then come back with the original instead of trying to...
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw motion. Okay, so...
I withdraw the call and the motion, and I'm just withdrawing.
Okay, back to square one.
Go back to bass fishing.
Okay. Well, after that discussion, which I do think provided a lot of clarity for us on this issue, does anyone have a new motion or a motion to continue this project for further research and clarification?
I'll move adoption of conditional use permit, let's see, 2101, the Verosa Cottage, adopting the staff report as part of the public record, and the conditions as specified in attachments C and B and C. I think it was B and C. Yep.
I think it's just C.
Okay. I'll second. Do you have a second? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve attachment C as stated in the staff permit with the conditions listed in attachment C. Mr. Painter, can you go ahead?
Sure, for the record, did Mr. Keeney second the motion?
Yes.
I...
You seconded it.
Okay, I did.
Officially, okay.
I heard some noise over here, so was that you?
Oh, I thought it was you. Well, it is now.
I intended to.
Okay. So you can go ahead and call roll for adoption of the staff record and the allowance of the conditional permit, use permit as written in attachment C, B and C. Okay, you can go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Chair Lepper?
No.
Vice Chair Gottberg?
No.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Cool. Okay, so the conditional use permit is approved with a vote of three to two with Commissioners Lepper and Gottberg voting no. A reminder that all decisions by the Planning Commission are appealable within a 10-day calendar period and may be made at the City Hall via the Placerville City Clerk. Okay? So, all set. Okay, on to the next one. We are now going to look at number 150, Placerville Drive, a conditional use permit 90 dash 113 dash R for the QuickServe, and it is for the outdoor display and rental of U-Haul trucks on-site. Mr. Painter?
Yeah, let's begin again.
Give us the report.
The application was submitted by Namath Kondahari. He's the business owner of the QuickServe branded convenience store with gas pumps, car wash located at 150 Placerville Drive. The application is indeed for a request to modify that conditional use permit from back in 1990 to allow for the display and rental of rental trucks, in this case, the U-Haul rental truck brand. The use would operate as a pickup and drop-off location for the U-Haul trucks. A customer would use a phone app or a computer app to reserve a truck. No trailers or other equipment would be displayed or rented from this location per the applicant. The applicant also states that no maintenance of the rental trucks would occur on the site. So the site plan provided shows the area drawn by the applicant as to where he is requesting the rental trucks to be displayed when they are rented or for rent. And staff has concern that the truck inventory space that's closest to the pump island could impact vehicle circulation nearest that northerly pump island should a U-Haul and their two largest truck rental options park there. The staff report goes into some detail regarding my look at the U-Haul website where it was, I learned that the trucks are defined based on the length of their cargo space or their cargo area, not the overall length of the vehicle. And the website does give dimensions for the trucks that are smaller than the 20-foot truck or the 26-foot truck where they do not provide the overall length. So, looking at other resources, I looked at the manufacturer of the vehicle trucks and the chassis, and a couple that I located or found information on, is that a typical length of the truck cab, the hood and the motor area of the truck would add to the length of that vehicle 10 or more feet. So that puts those 20-foot truck and 26-foot trucks, as described by U-Haul, into the 30-foot overall, or 36 or more overall length. And based on the scale or the description by the applicant of the distance between, you know, where that planner island is nearest Placerville Drive and the pump canopy, by removing, if the commission, as staff is recommending, that the space closest to the pump island, should the commission agree to approve this request, should be removed from the conditional use permit if it's granted by the Planning Commission. That would allow more or better circulation through the site than if you would have a 36-foot or longer truck in that space. So the issue can be mitigated by reducing the display area that I've shown in the staff report as figure three. Also, the other issue, although not mentioned by the applicant, since this is an additional use on the property, there is an opportunity for a property owner, a business owner, to add signage to advertise this use. It's kind of counterintuitive because these vehicles kind of rent themselves. They are, you know, a billboard, more or less, because of the way they're painted and have U-Haul written on them. However, the code does permit another use on a particular site to have signage. However, you may remember from your action late last year, earlier this year, I'm trying to remember what month it was, where you approved the QuickServe rebranding. And there is some additional sign area that this site could accommodate and not exceed our maximum threshold. And that total amount would be 27 square feet. Once again, the applicant is not proposing any signage at all. However, staff has conditioned the request that should they wish to, that they obtain a sign permit from the city, and of course, we would scrutinize it against that allowance for aggregate area for the site. So certainly, this use is a, really a convenience auto-related use, and therefore, that's why it's before you. It's a conditional use in city code. Automobile sales and service uses are conditional. So this convenience use would be added to, you know, the existing convenience uses on the site, the convenience market, the convenience of the gas pumps, and the car wash, all located on this location. Staff does not believe there would be a direct impact to surrounding property as these trucks would be inventoried entirely on this location as conditioned by staff. So the potential conflicts with, between the site are mitigated by that reduction that I mentioned earlier. Staff recommends the commission take the action beginning on page five, make the findings on pages five and six of the staff report, then condition the request as provided as attachment B. Before I conclude, staff did receive one public comment. I made that available to you before the meeting this evening, placed in front of you, and it was from Diane Murillo. Due to the fact that it was received yesterday, it was not part of your packet. So I wanted to make sure that is in the record. The applicant is not in the audience this evening. He was aware of, we did send him a public notice. I have heard nothing from him regarding whether he could attend or could not attend. The other thing I did mention in the staff report is that I had been working with a person who's been involved with the landscape plan that needs to come back before you, and I had hoped that he would be submitting that plan and represent the property owner here. But that plan did not arrive, therefore, it was not on the agenda tonight. And I believe the gentleman that was going to represent him and also represent for this use and represent the landscape plan, I have reached out to him a couple of times by telephone and by email and received no response. That concludes my staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions to staff on the report that you received?
I had a question, which would be better directed to the applicant, but I'm going to see. So, one of the things that I was wondering in relation to traffic flow, if the scenario under which, when a tanker truck is there, refilling the underground storage tanks had been taken into account, one of the things that that seems to do is create the people who are in that closest gas pump not being able to pull forward because the truck and the refill is right at the end of that, that section to their tank. And so those people back out of the pumps if they're there. And so one of the things that I noticed is when people are backing out there and pulling in from Placerville Drive, if it's quite busy, they utilize the exact space where the trucks are proposed to be parked in order to not collide into each other. So, I'd like to ask the applicant that, but if you have any thoughts on that, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm aware that the tank lids are, yes, they are, if I'm not mistaken, if you look at the site plan behind you, and granted, the North Arrow, north in this case, would be two, yeah. So, thank you.
Oh, wow. Hey.
Director Rivas, thank you. The, I guess to answer your question, there is a possibility that the tanker truck, when it comes to deliver gas, because there is no physical barrier between the Rayleigh's property and this property, they may be able to align their truck in which to, to at least provide enough room for them to dispense their refueling. I agree, though, and it's well-stated, that when those trucks are there, yeah, maneuver around the site is limited, but it's temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's a very fair question.
Yeah, and I think there would be measures for a temporary use, but that's, you know, like putting codes out and blocking off those particular gas pumps during the time that the tanker truck is there refilling.
Good question. Anyone else have questions to staff?
The proposal that you have to eliminate the one parking space, was the applicant made aware of that?
I did inform him through the, through an email, and he, of course, did receive this packet. So, yes, there were a couple of times where that was made known to him.
That, in a sense, is one-fourth of his business, dealing with the trucks.
He's proposing only four vehicles to be rented, so, yeah.
And if you take one space away, that's down to three.
Okay. Mr. Friend, did you have a question?
Just for clarity on the diagram, so we're in the bottom left-hand corner of the big map, and there's a diagonal there. Then there's these slotted lines. Are each one of those a parking stall for a truck?
I believe that's what the applicant is trying to convey.
Okay, one, two, three, four, I could almost get five, and staff is eliminating one of those in your proposal.
Where's your fifth one?
One, two, three, four, five.
One of the spaces, I believe it's the space closest to...
What's that space?
Closest to the Rayleigh's property, so it's the northerly space in this case.
All right, well, in any event, those were kind of...
They were proposing potentially having a tandem vehicle at that location.
I'm upset about this anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. I had a question for the applicant too, but I don't think you guys can ask because it's about the mechanisms by which they can control the U-Hauls and things like that, who shows up in parking and who's monitoring all of that and everything. But unfortunately, they are not here, so that cannot be answered by you guys. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff about this report?
Just a comment. I would be in favor of this if the vehicles could be parked at the rear of the property, but because they don't own the property to the rear, that's part of Rayleigh's parking lot, I am not in favor of four large trucks parked out with their noses facing the street on a regular basis. I don't think this adds to our community. There are plenty of U-Haul rental places around town that can service the people that need them, so that's just how I feel about it.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's what I'm going to go to. So we are not going to hear from the applicant right now, so I am going to open up the, just a topic for public comment. Is there any members of the public that wish to address the commission on this topic? Okay, seeing none. We will close public comment and return the topic to the commissioners for discussion and action.
So, Madam Chair, as I was reading through this, when I got to the point where the landscape plan was supposed to be submitted, we were, conditions back in February, this is now June, has not been submitted. Over my years' experience on this commission, this has always been a thorn. I'm inclined, and the applicant's not here, we have questions, rather than deny the project because then it would go theoretically immediately appeal to the city council, I would be more than happy to postpone this for 90 days, no more than 90 days, and with clear instruction from staff to the applicant that the commission is not happy that you're not here, they're not happy you haven't met your, and they have questions. And if you want to get this approved, you need to show up and get your landscape plan submitted. That's my, that's my position. That's how I feel about it.
Is that a motion to continue this item to no longer to 90?
I'll make a motion to continue this item for no more than 90 days, and have staff provide clear instructions to the applicant that the commission absolutely wants the landscape plan submitted, and we need the applicant represented because we have questions. And we cannot approve the project without being able to ask questions. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. So the motion is to continue this, and staff will communicate to the applicant that we would like to discuss both the landscape plan as well as their request for U-Hauls on-site with them within, at a meeting within the next 90 days? Correct? Okay. Yes. Mr. Painter, can you call roll?
We'll start with the motion maker. Member Friend?
Yes.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Member List?
No.
Chair Lepper?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gottberg?
Aye.
Okay, so we have continued that public hearing until a time to be set in the future. And... and, that's good. So we'll go to our last public hearing, which is, where's my documents now? Item number seven, here it is. This is a site plan review, number 84-15, 84-15-R. The Green Room Social Club located at 251 Main Street, a request for signage for a new business. Mr. Painter, do you have the report?
I do. This request would be an amendment or change to a 1984 site plan review, site plan review 84-15, where that particular request involved the exterior changes to the building, to what you see today, which is kind of a Spanish influence, and also interior work that basically involved two buildings where a restaurant and bar was the ultimate result, and many of you remember that as La Casa Grande, and that operated for a couple of decades at that location. The current property owner is in the audience tonight, Jennifer Ty, and she's requesting to amend that site plan review for signage for her new business, a new restaurant, bar, and event business called the Green Room Social Club. There are three signs that comprise the sign, plan request. Sign elevations and the mounting locations are provided by the applicant as attachment A, the applicant's submittal package. Two of the signs are proposed for the front elevation along Main Street. One is, is a nine-foot, nine-square-foot projecting sign, which would be hung over the sidewalk near the, the front entry. The second Main Street sign is a wall sign comprising 18 square feet of sign area to be mounted above the architectural canopy but below the building's roof eve. Each sign would be backlit with a green LED light source and have identical sign copy of the Green Room Social Club established 2020, Placerville, CA, California. The third business sign would be placed on the building's rear elevation that faces US 50. This wall sign is approximately 36 square feet in area, would be mounted above the architectural canopy but below the building's roof eve. The sign copy, copy is slightly different, but has the same overall architectural intent, and the sign copy, copy would be the Green Room Social Club. So like the other two signs, this sign along the rear elevation would also be backlit with that green illuminated, or green LED light source. Staff evaluated this request for consistency with the relevant general plan goals and policies that promote architectural quality, others that have to do with the intent to preserve and enhance the visual quality of buildings in the downtown, and others that promote good sign design. Staff finds that the sign, the signs have a good scale to their respective mounting locations, they are arranged in an attractive manner on the building, and have continuity with each other, as I've mentioned, similar sign copy, color, exterior lighting, et cetera. The request was also evaluated and found consistent and compatible with the site plan review sign design criteria within City Code Section 1049G, in that the proposed signs have the architectural characteristics of sign copy and style, metal construction, each would be backlit, as I mentioned, so they each had those, those aspects in common. The request is therefore consistent with the sign regulations under City Code Section 10417, as, as it relates to aggregate sign area, internal illumination, and the mounting height proposed for the projecting sign over the sidewalk. Staff recommends the commission take the action beginning on page seven to make the findings provided to support approval, and then conditionally approve site plan review or SPR 84-15-R, subject to the conditions of approval provided on pages seven and eight of the staff report. As I mentioned, Jennifer Ty is in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Fantastic, thank you. Do any commissioners have any staff, questions for staff based on the report that they received?
I understand that our purview this evening is dealing strictly with signage, that's fine. Just a question, though, I saw the occupancy note at 68, is that the approximate or same occupancy that the La Casa Grande had as well, or is there, is it different? Is this different? Do we know? All right, and the only reason I ask that, and again, I know our, our purview is restricted to signage, I think, but if, if it's different and more, if this project proposes an increased need in, in parking because of increased occupancy, you know, how does that factor into, we had the discussion around, was it 305 Main Street, the hangman's building, and they, they're adding, you know, use there, and what, the whole parking thing, I guess, and I'm not laying this on this particular applicant, so just for staff, where are we at with the whole parking survey, et cetera, so you don't have to answer that now, if you don't want to, Pierre can come up.
I can answer that real briefly, and hopefully it'll clarify everything. If, if, if the Green Room Social Club were to substantially increase the requirements for parking, the city would impose no additional parking requirements on the applicant. The city passed an ordinance some time ago, following creation of the downtown parking district and the creation of the parking and new fees, such that any change in use within existing buildings, whether increases parking or not, the city shall not require any parking and new fees or additional parking, only if new structures are built can the city request parking and new fees.
Physical expansion.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners for staff on this? Okay, so we will go ahead and let the applicant come up and speak at this point.
Hello and good evening. I'm Jennifer Ty, purchased the building several months ago, six to nine months ago, and I apologize for my chicken-scratch plans there, working with challenges with time and budgets. I did the best I could to get the information into the planning commission. I did submit pictures to show scale. My graphic designers helped to put the images on the pictures so we could show exactly what that would look like and give a really good idea. Once the planning commission approves this application, it moves to the building department for a permit. That's an opportunity, of course, to get those plans and those drawings darkened up and more accurate for scale, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I can try to give you measurements, if you will, but everything is very spelled out in words and numbers. The pictures and the plans that are hand-drawn are just the best I could do at the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I'll, I'll jump in here at this point. Looking at your, your drawing, number one, I'm seeing a, a rectangle with the long axis running vertical, and I go over a couple pages, and it says, "Front Door Signage Number One," and I see a rectangle that is with the long axis on the horizontal. What, which is it?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but if you look at the description of the...
On your plan right here, you have a vertical axis.
There's a, there's a sign, an existing...
And then you have here, a horizontal sign.
Oh, this? There are three total signs, and that particular picture is giving you the description of the sign that goes in front of the door, and it's the smaller sign, which is also spelled out in words. I wanted to give an actual depiction of the sign that was made, so you could see what it would be, and it's not shown hanging, because that would not be under the approved guidelines until you approve it.
Have you, have you paid a sign company to build these signs for you?
The signs were built by a machine company, that machine cuts metal.
And, and they didn't provide you drawings of what those signs are?
No, they did not. There's words with descriptions of the measurements, and they actually came in incorrect from what we ordered, which was a little bit of a challenge, and we had to modify hence the lovely drawings I submitted. We've been open for about 30 days without signage, and it really is affecting our business. It's very difficult to get people to come into the door in a brand-new business when you don't have a sign outside.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Friend?
I'm just gonna follow, follow up on this, because now I'm a little bit more confused. It seems like you have front door signage, that seems to be like the actual sign, is it not?
There's a front door sign that is being placed on the existing hardware. There was a California Kitchen sign that was hanging.
Right, but I mean, but your, your logo and all that, the cut metal, that, that, this is it, right? That's what it is.
Whatever you're pointing to, the pictures are containing all of the logos. There was a total of four metal signs. Two of them were placed on a piece of reclaimed wood frame. Those will be hung outside the door, and then there's flat signs that go on the front and the back of the building.
Yeah, so I get that, but th, these exist.
Yes, they've been made, correct.
These are pictures of things that actually exist.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, all right, so I, I wasn't quite, I was trying to follow you, I really was, but I didn't, I didn't follow you, because it seems like it's, it's here, the actual item, and then she's placed it like here, right, and then the one on the back? So, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, then I will go ahead and open this, so thank you very much, you can sit down, and we'll let you know if we have any more questions. I'm gonna go ahead and open up public comment on this topic, so if there are any members of the public who'd like to address the commission on this topic, may approach the podium. Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment and return this to commissioners for discussion and action. Do you guys have any insight input on this topic?
No, I'm, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the staff...
Before you do.
I'm sorry?
May I?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had a comment.
I'm gonna hold up a, a drawing that you received on the Cumberland project, okay? If, if this was all you were given, would you have approved that? And my answer for you is probably not, because it doesn't give you enough detail. Yet here, drawings that are supposed to represent our downtown are of a lesser quality than even this, and, and we're jumping at the opportunity to do this. I'm not, I'm not against the project, I'm not against it, I, I find it mind-boggling that somebody would build a sign for a company and not provide drawings for it. And that's why I asked the question, if, if, if she had drawings showing how, how these were gonna be fastened to the wall, the sizes of them, and so on, and, and I, you know, we have, we have a number of 40, 43-inch by 10-foot, that's, that's reasonable, okay? This one is reasonable. I, I really don't understand this at all, what the two-foot...
It's showing two feet from the roof line, I believe, is what they detailed in the narrative.
It looks to me like the sign is six foot across.
My point is that, if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna have to try to decipher minute details that, that aren't there, I think we're making a mistake. We're, we're accepting something that isn't the quality that this city ought to be looking for on a, on a very simple item. I am, I am not in favor of, of this presentation under the terms that, that were given. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Respectfully, I disagree, I found it pretty straightforward for me to understand what was going on. I feel like this was kind of just to show where, basically, on the building it was going, with more information on this one, and really in the staff report, delineating the size and the, everything that was within the, the allowable sizing. So if it was bigger than the sizing that's allowable, or if it was not clear to me in these ones, I'd probably have some more questions, but I would just, I tend to disagree that I feel, I feel pretty comfortable in how it's described, respectfully.
I agree with you, Amy, but, you know, John, you do have a point. This, this is a, a little bit confusing, perhaps, maybe it, it doesn't make the, the point that you wanted it to, however, it's not the only thing that we were given in the package. The applicant has provided these pictures to show us what the, the font, the, you know, kind of the look of it, the overall look. You had made the comment earlier about proportion, you know, perhaps projecting it on this, you know, may not be 100% accurate, but we know essentially what the sign will look like, and then as Amy pointed out, table on page two, we've got a great summary, not only, we know what these signs look like, but they're well within what is allowed for the building, and also, you know, I'm going to defer to staff, they, they have worked with the applicant, and in the staff report, you know, it speaks to how things are in proportion. So, you know, John, you, you make a good point.
May I ask you, may I ask you a question?
I, just let me finish this, and we often get applications that aren't, aren't the quality that our town, that we deserve, that our town needs to substantiate its decisions we make, but, and perhaps we should just go on record, that, you know, that we, we really would like to have clearer reports given to us, it makes our job a lot easier. But to hold this application up, in this instance, not having said that before, I, there have been many applications that I was disappointed with, and I, I felt like I was really trying to sift through to figure out what it was they wanted, but we have to give people, you know, the, a little bit of leeway, a little benefit, because not everybody's got a great budget to, to give us, you know, plans to show us exactly what it is gonna look like, but that's, so that's what I wanted to say about not holding up this application.
So, so my point to you is that if Thompson's Toyota, when they were ready to do their sign in front, would have come in here with a sketch of a approximate height and approximate size in, of their sign, that would have been okay.
I would, no, it would not be okay, but it would be allowed, and also, it's, you know, given the, we have regulations, how much square footage in signage they are allowed, so they would, they have to give us some idea of what it will look like, and if it falls within the tolerances, then, you know, our job is to approve it. We could object and say, you know, we expect much better out of you, but it's not a reason to disapprove it.
And we have done that. I mean, we may grade the application as a C minus or whatever, but at the end of the day, if we're able to decipher and understand and feel comfortable that we understand what's proposed, then I think that we, we can. If you, if you don't, vote no, seriously, if you, if you don't feel comfortable, I don't know what you're planning to do, I, how it's presented is unclear to me, even if it meets the requirements of the, of the sign ordinance in terms of aggregate space, et cetera, I still can't figure it out. No vote is clearly within your prerogative, not, not a problem. But I, I feel, and I think, share Commissioner Keeney's position, that I do understand what it's gonna look like, and the feel, and the dimensions, and, and then all of the footprint and all that, so I can support the project as submitted.
I think my final comment would be that if the signs that we're looking at were hand-drawn, then I would have an issue with it, because then I'd really have to stretch my imagination, but I can see the signs, I think they're nice, I think they look good. I'd seen the sign downtown for a minute, I think it was hung for a minute, it looked nice, I thought, so, yeah, I'd be open at this point, I guess, to entertaining a motion around this topic. Bueller?
Oh, okay, I will make that motion, then, that we adopt, I'll follow the staff recommendation to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings as listed, that this is exempt from further review under SEQA. Let's see, 2.2, the description of the sign modifications, and the total get, total aggregate sign area of 63 square feet. Recommendation number three, three to approve the project at 251 Main Street, SPR 84-15-R, with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 of conditions of approval that, that are described on pages seven and eight.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, thank you. Mr. Painter, can you call roll, please? Or, I'm sorry, any further discussion prior to calling roll?
No.
Can you call roll, please?
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gottberg.
Aye.
Chair Lepper.
Aye.
Member List.
No.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Okay, so the conditional use permit, I'm sorry, the site plan review has been approved. A reminder that all decisions by the planning commission are appealable within a 10-day calendar period. Appeals may be made with a written request to the city clerk at City Hall. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and there will be a better copy of that in the final file.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Welcome. Okay, so we are now done with our public hearings for the evening. So unless you have any special business, we'll move to matters from commissioners and staff. Do any commissioners have any information that they would like to share or request with fellow commissioners or with staff?
Based on the comment we received in public comment, the discussion of B&Bs versus short-term rentals and in the broader zoning outside the CBD, at some point, I'd like staff maybe to come back to commission and have that as just a brief discussion. I think it warrants. I think we're going in certain directions, anyway.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. Other commissioners?
About a year and a half ago, the Department of Motor Vehicles installed a loudspeaker system. And I live near that. Close enough, I guess, that I can hear for eight hours a day, next serving...
B-98?
Yeah. Okay, and I called Mr. Bigelow's office, and he said that this was a city matter, not a, his office has said it was a city matter, not a council, or not a representative's problem, in a sense. We also, neighbors, have spoken to me a number of times about them doing inspections on the street where the inspector will stand in the street, and you have to wait for him to move out of the way to go up and down Sleepy Hollow. I would appreciate it if the staff would look into that.
We certainly will, and let's hope that maybe these could have been measures that the DMV put in place because of COVID. And hopefully, if today such restrictions are lifted...
Didn't change.
Didn't change, okay. We will look into it. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. That sounds kind of bad.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else have any matters that they'd like to share or ask staff about? Staff, do you have anything for us?
It's great to be back.
I know. It's really, really nice.
It's surreal.
Yeah. Yes, good to see your faces. Anything further from you guys?
We have a meeting next month?
Yeah, I could go, we have a, there's a community cleanup opportunity whenever they come about. There's one in the spring and one in the fall, and I didn't bring the flyer with me. I believe it's posted to...
June 26th, I have everything staged.
She's on it.
You're on that, Commissioner?
And we did not speak before in order to get you to prompt to say that, but...
It's been on the refrigerator ever since it came in the bill.
There you go.
So we wanted to announce that. Thank you. Yes, we will have a meeting, which should be the first Tuesday, which July is the sixth.
We will have a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Anything else from anyone in the room?
Is that as far out as you can estimate the calendar? I am trying to make some plans with friends to travel. And of course, everyone wants to travel on a day that City Planning Commission meets. But if you don't have any more information, I'll just, I'll let you know what days I might not be available in case that you can adjust the calendar, but I just thought I would ask.
Director Evas, and I can tell you that this spring, we are busy. Now, not all of it is ready, it's percolating, but it hasn't quite reached to the level of we need to notice for you. So we're kind of waiting. It could all come at once in my tenure here. I mean, that's why we have items, three items on one night. It's just the way it works. Pierre knows this. I want to get people through the system as quickly as we can with the parameters that were, anyway, long story short, there's a lot of unknowns out there, so I can't, I can't really crystal ball it other than that.
Thank you. Like I said, I'll just work, negotiate, and make myself available on our designated Tuesdays.
Right.
Okay, anything further? Nope. Okay, well, then I will go ahead and call the chairman of the meeting at 8:16 PM on June 15th, 2021, the day we opened again.